Special session of the Planning Commission. This meeting to order. We have established quorum, all members are present. I will need to administer an oath. If you plan on speaking during today's special session, I do need you to just say "I do" after I administer this oath, and that is, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
I do.
Thank you. There is a sign-in sheet going around. If you have not had an opportunity to sign in yet, please do so before this session is over. The special session is for case number 12-01, brought forth by the Wasserman Group. It is titled "The Stimson Garden Apartments." It is a Title 41 site plan review. I would like to ask either John Paskey or Paul Logue, or Planner or Director of Development Code Enforcement, to just give a brief summary of the project, and we'll leave it open to public input after that summary, and then the Planning Commission will hold a little more discussion after that input session.
If my notes reflect it correctly, we're trying to get an interpretation of the parking. Do you want to ...
Yeah, that's a good point. We could do that first, after we get a quick summary of the project, if you don't mind, John or Paul.
Project is for ... This is working. Project's for an 18-bedroom, four-units, I believe, apartment complex at 22 West Stimson Avenue, parking on the ground floor in the garage with residences on the second floor and above. Mr. Wasserman's project would entail demolishing an existing building and building apartments in its stead.
That's good enough, thank you. Lisa Eliason, I know we had asked you or Pat Lang to give us an interpretation of how you would read City Code, particularly, does parking facility or area qualify as a business according to Athens City Code, especially as pertains to the B3 zone? If you would provide us a little bit of guidance, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Eliason, and I'm Chief City Prosecutor under Patrick J. Lang, and Mr. Lang asked me to be present today, and actually to look into the situation and give an opinion. Parking lot is a principal permitted use in a B3 zone, and in fact, we have many examples in the city of Athens. On January the 9th of 2012, Mr. Wasserman sent a letter to the city, and to me, in that he states that parking would be a business. The fact that the applicant, meaning Mr. Wasserman, likely will rent those spaces to the tenants living above does not negate the parking status as a business. So Mr. Wasserman recognizes that the parking must be a business, and in fact, states that in that that he would be renting those spaces to the tenants living above. To me, that is where the problem begins. Since parking is required on-site, and it's always required on-site, then the required parking cannot be by a separate business. It can't be paid for the parking if it's required. So in other words, if parking's required, which is, it is required in this situation, on-site parking is required, it can't, there can't be a requirement that the people pay for it, and if they're not paying, then it's not a business, so it would not be permitted.
So in your opinion, what would be the principal permitted use on this, in this project?
A principal permitted use would be parking.
Or a business.
Or a business, of course, sure, or a business. And this, we have examples all over the city that a parking lot is a business, and there are examples of that in a B3 zone. The problem becomes, it's a business, and Mr. Wasserman himself recognized that he was going to have to require his tenants to pay for that, but you can't require the tenants to pay for something that's required in the first place.
So you're saying ...
And parking is required.
Go ahead.
Okay, so what you're telling me is that you really can't, it's, they're tied together. It's a requirement for 18 spaces, 18 spaces are there, you can't sever it from the actual apartment complex itself.
And I would turn it back then to the Planning Commission. Would the Planning Commission, or if there was a variance, but would the Planning Commission allow for off-site parking, which I don't believe they would, because the law requires that the parking be on-site?
Conceptually, they could go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for that, though, in theory.
Yes, in theory.
Okay. So under this instance, the parking would be, if it's required, would it be considered a permitted accessory use as defined in the R1 zone, where parking facilities are permitted so long as it's exclusive use by the residents?
Okay, I'm going to leave that up to the Planning Commission for their interpretation.
All right. Let's see. Any other questions for Lisa while I have your attention?
So, okay, if I'm interpreting this from my side of it, then it is no longer a business if it's required parking for the apartments, and therefore, it is, it doesn't fit all the code at this point as a Title 41. Is that, that's what I'm hearing, but it's up for us to determine that, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess where, if you, see, I don't understand how a parking lot would be considered a business, because would both controls apply to a parking lot? Because, you know, there's a point in the Austrian parking requirement that banks, comma, businesses have, which, if it's a business, has to have one parking space per 300 square feet. So I just, are parking lots not required to have, you know, if you're selling each lot, is there any requirement for the space to have?
Is a bank selling, is a bank selling a lot? They're probably not selling a parking space. If they have excess, they probably can. I mean, our parking garage is taxable as a business. City parking garage is on the tax rolls because it is a business, and it's solely that.
Okay.
We have parking spaces for sale all around town.
Right, so then that would, yeah, the Austrian parking requirement would not apply into a parking facility or area?
Probably not. I've, you know, I'm just kicking this back. I have, it's my, I'm just one person here, okay? I'm just one Planning Commission member. On the other hand, you know, if it's required parking, you can't, you can't say, okay, I'm going to sell that parking to somebody else.
Right.
Even though, but I'm required to have it with, if I'm required to have it with this bed, again, one bedroom, one parking space.
Right.
Can you actually sell it to somebody else? Legal?
Right.
I guess you could.
Well, it's, it's very clear in the B3 where it defines permitted accessory uses, and you have to kind of keep following back, because it will say, the permitted accessory use for a B3 is in the B2D, and then you go to the B2D, and it's, I'm sorry, in the B2, and it's, the permitted uses are in the B1, and it keeps falling back all the way till you get to R1. And R1 is where it explicitly allows parking facilities, so long as it's for exclusive use of the residents, and that, it also, in the permitted accessory uses under R1 forbades conduct of any business, trade, or industry.
I think I should add here, if you were to read 230407, B3, general business zone, principal permitted uses, any use permitted and as regulated in the B2Ds, B2D zones, except as in here and after modified in the following general conditions. What we've been doing is, because it says regulated in the BTD, and then it says to the B2, we keep reverting back, but if it also says, except as hereafter modified in the following general conditions, and item number one allows parking in the B3, it states right there. So, we can't ignore those other things that are permissible in a B3, not as an accessory use, as a permitted use. So it is a permitted use in the B3. So, and I think Lisa clarified that, it's a question of whether needed or whatever, but we need to be careful, I think, about going all the way back to the R1 and/or considering this an accessory use, because it's not, it would be parking. So then we do need to clarify, which is what Lisa did, whether it's permitted and/or required.
So, so I guess it would, that would imply that any required parking is a business?
I'm, I mean, I just, I think we need to be careful how we keep stepping back and going back to the R1, to the B2. I mean, we need to realize that it does say parking is a permissible use in the B3, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but I guess if you look at it from a retail standpoint, say, it was a retail store and it required, you know, three spaces, are those three spaces then considered a permitted principal use as defined by B3? You know, I think that the problem might be there's too many loops in the, in the code right now. So, I guess the other reading that I'm wondering is, is it implied that residential is the principal use per that general condition? If you read the B3, John, if you would read the B3 permitted uses?
Well, it's, it's rather lengthy.
Well, it goes, it goes back to, I guess, where it's about in B2.
Well, but I meant, principal permitted uses, it does say, any use permitted and as regulated in the B2D, except as here and after modified in the following general conditions. Obviously, it can necessarily stack back to the B2D, which can stack back to the B2, and it would include all of those uses as well. But also included in the B3 are, all businesses, services, or processing shall be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, except for the sale of automobile fuel, lubricants and fluids at service stations, loading and unloading operations, parking, the outdoor display or storage of vehicles, materials and equipment, and use as specified in paragraph A 9 and 10 below. And then, a lot of other night operations, eating and drinking establishments, hospitals, animal hospitals, commercial recreation, building trades, bottling works, miscellaneous trades, contractors' yards, agricultural, and other uses deemed general, same general character by the VZA. So, there, what I'm saying is, there's more uses allowed, if you read all of these, than just what we're, we kind of keep referring back to the B2 and the B2D. You need to include all these others as well.
Okay.
Let's clarify, the project requires on-site parking, so it cannot be viewed as part of the commercial business? Am I interpreting this right, Lisa? It's up to your interpretation. The Planning Commission.
That's one over here.
Yeah. All right. So what we have is, there's one reading where they're both principal permitted uses, without any accessory use.
Correct.
So, the, in that instance, the parking could not be tied directly to the apartments?
That's how I'm hearing it, is that ...
You would have to have separate parking, off-site, at least 250 feet from that site for the residence, for exclusive uses of the residence.
Which would require a variance.
Right.
Or deeded.
Or deeded.
Yeah.
So as a Title 41, this does not fit, because it requires a variance, it does not up to court.
Correct.
We've had other Title 41s that require variances?
Yes. Usually have to get the variance first.
I understand that. I'm just saying, I didn't want to, I didn't know that the interpretation was shutting down.
Well, I was thinking, to Title 41, if it's all, essentially, the way I interpret Title 41 is if it's all in code, we, you know, we don't have the power to deny it, but if it's, it has to meet code even to be applied to as a Title 41. I mean, it got this far because we have a murky area of what businesses on our first floor is. It sounds like it's kind of coming down, I don't know, that it's, if it's required parking, it's not business. I may be wrong on that.
Well, I guess, the problem is, if you make parking an accessory use, it has to be exclusive use to the residence, and you can't conduct any business in the parking, so you can't, you therefore can't lease it. So, the only interpretation that would work is if it were a principal permitted use that qualifies as a business, but then you can't tie the parking to the residences directly. Now, a residence could still lease the space, but it isn't for their exclusive use any longer. So you would still have, required to have 18 spaces somewhere in the 250-feet limit that are deeded to those residences. That'd be, I guess, more interpretation. Yes. We don't have anything, trying to think, there's, it's a tough one. Yeah, I mean, I think the only reading that we could use, and I don't know if this is an acceptable reading or not, but the only one I found that seems like that would be able to, that the Commission could approve the project, is if it's implied that the residence is the principal use by that general condition statement in B2.
Then how does it meet the commercial on the first floor?
Well, John, could you read the B2 definition real quick, sir? I don't have my, my code.
B2 Business District, principal permitted uses, any convenience business or general business or services establishment, subject to the following general conditions. Residential uses are permitted only on the second story and above, automotive service and service stations, and other uses, again, permitted through the VZA.
Right, so as a general condition, does that mean the residence is the principal permitted use? Do you know what I mean? Could you, Lisa, could you provide that to?
Oh, I have a copy.
Oh, you have a copy?
What do you want?
Well, I'm wondering if, does it, it says, principal permitted uses are convenience business, general business, services establishment, or the following general conditions?
Yes, in the B2. That's, this is a B3, that's what I want to just say.
Well, but the B3 explicitly states that what's allowed in the B2 is allowed in the B3.
Correct.
Plus these other items.
Plus these other.
Right. So I don't know, I mean, is that, does anyone interpret it that way, that the residence is implied as a principal use if it's a general condition of the B2 principal permitted uses?
But if it's a principal use, then you can't use the park, the parking still is a residential use?
Right.
That's what you're saying?
The, well, it would, I guess, imply that the residence is the principal permitted use, and now the parking's an accessory. But, I guess, that's why I'm, I'm asking, what type of a fine general condition in this usage?
The accessory use implies that you can separate the parking from the rentals?
No, it has to be, accessory use implies that it has to be incidental to the principal use. In other words, you can't, there can be no accessory use on a property without a principal use.
So, where does this fall into parking lots? Parking lots are a different animal, because you sell the parking spaces, and that's a principal use, as a parking.
Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't sell the space to, for it to qualify as an accessory use. It would have to be for exclusive use of the residence or the business.
Is this a residential use, even though it is an accessory use, is it accessory residential use on the first floor?
I don't think you can have an accessory, a residential use as an accessory that's ...
Permitted accessory uses, accessory uses and structures as permitted and as regulated in the, it says R3, I don't know if that's typo, in the R3 zone.
No, that's correct. If you get R3, it keeps going back, that's why you have to go all the way back to R1 to find.
In such other accessory uses and structures not otherwise prohibited, customarily accessory and incidental to any of the foregoing permitted uses. Now that's in the B2 section.
Instead of ...
The B3 section says the same thing, as you said, reverting back to the B2, and it stacks on back.
Yeah, it's not till you get to the R1, like I said, that it says the, that allows park, what it calls parking facility, but it also includes exclusive use by the residence. So I guess that's the only other interpretation I could possibly see, is that residence is the principal permitted use, again, the second story. But, I just don't, I'm not quite clear, as a general condition, that means these general conditions are principal permitted uses, also allowed?
The use of the term incidental, to me, reflects, it would be the opposite. I mean, this is required to have the parking. I don't see it as being incidental to the principal permitted use.
Yeah. John, could you give me a copy of that code, that section you have, sorry?
It's the only one I got, still have.
Let me take two minutes and go through the code.
Yeah, okay. Let me look. Since you're out, let me look at what he's getting at, I'm sorry. Can see from that far, I'm sorry. I guess where I'm, what does it mean by subject to the following general conditions? I haven't spoken any of these, any of these, subject to the following conditions. Does that mean it has to be this with that above? Or does it mean it's a permitted use? Subject to, if it's residential, it's a permitted use, it's above, or if it's on a model vehicle, it's a permitted, that's how I'm starting to read it, too.
That's how I would see it.
Subject to is kind of like a provided there.
Yeah.
Did you get it?
Yeah, but, you can have this, no, I want, I'm gonna, I'd like to.
There's B3s right there.
Oh, thank you.
Go where you need to go.
Thank you. Okay. Not to keep repeating ourselves, but we seem to enjoy that. B2 Business District, definition of principal permitted uses, under A, this is what I've had John read, but, any convenience business or general business or services establishment, subject to the following general conditions. The subject to the following general conditions apply that it's a principal permitted use so long as a residence is on the second story, or that an automotive service station is 50 feet from an R-zone. See, I think it can be interpreted that way, and I just don't know if that's the correct reading or not. What does subject to the following general conditions imply? That residence is, is a principal, yeah, right.
That's 2304.
It's easier to assume it's in the right.
2304A4, right? Oh, right there, okay, 2405, 0405.
Mary, could you look up the definition of accessory uses?
Is it in here?
I believe it is.
In the 23 definitions or in the code definitions?
In the definitions, either 23 or at the rear of the building in, or book in 99.
We've got for accessory uses here. Accessory use, this would be under 231001 definitions. Any use of structure subordinate to the principal use of a building, or to principal use of the land which is located in the same lot serving a purpose customarily incidental to the use of the principal building or land use. Any use of structure subordinate to the principal use of the building.
It's a principal.
And/or to the principal use of the land which is located on the same lot, serving the purpose customarily incidental to the use of the principal building or land use.
Now, accessory structure, again, this would only be if, if we were to interpret the parking as accessory to the principal, it's only the garage portion, the parking area would not be considered an accessory use, because it has to be a structure or building. Just go under there?
No, not, there are, I see there's actually two definitions of parking. Parking area, any public or private area under or outside of building or structure designed to use of parking motor vehicles, including parking lots, garages, legally designated areas of public interest. Parking area private, parking area exclusive use of its owners, tenants, leases, and occupants of that lot, to which the parking area is located, or its customers, employees, and who else, whoever else is permitted to use that parking area. Then there's a third one, parking area public, parking area available for the public, with or without payment or fee. Interesting, but no principal definition principle.
Let me see if it's in the other, the big definition.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
Did that end up in the front of the chapter?
Maybe.
Maybe it is going to tear it up a bird.
John, do you know where the definitions for the whole code books usually?
99.
Title 99.
Yeah, there it is, thanks. All right. All right, there is definition for building principal, a building in which is conducted the main or principal use of the lot, on which said building is situated. See if it's just principal.
Well, can we agree the main use is residential housing? I don't know if we need to start breaking this out into components that we can ...
Well, that's what I think it is. Yeah, that's the only definition. All right, so, which brings us back is residential, a principal permitted use of that area. Subject to the following general conditions seems to imply that.
So you wanted a motion to interpret this as something that fits the code or not fits the code?
Well, I guess, I'm trying to figure out if it, if it does fit the code or not, so, yeah, it would just, I mean, I think the only reading of the code that would allow this to get approved is if the residential, residential is the principal permitted use that's on the second story, that the parking is accessory, that is exclusive use of the residence, and that the parking cannot have any business conducted in it, therefore, the parking cannot be leased back to the residence. It has to be just their exclusive use.
But I thought the initial interpretation was, since the on-site parking is required, how do you view that as accessory? Incidental, subordinate, I'm just, I have another issue that someone asked me about.
It's the structure itself, it's the garage portion of the project, the nine spots in there, that is the accessory structure.
But it's not accessory, because it's required. It's like an accessory tire on your car, the third tire, you only need three tires on your car, now you need a fourth tire. Does that tire, the spare tire is the accessory tire. The four tires on the ground are not accessory.
All right, so that, that interpretation, anything that is required by code, you cannot have them as accessory?
The parking spaces that are under the building are removed from the required parking, and additional parking is found then in the lot, on one chair or wherever, what happens now? Will you consider that underneath the house, the first story?
Good question. At that point, I'd probably look at it like the spare tire on a car. That, at least, you know, again. That at least, you know, again, if I use the term accessory and I think of what's necessity versus an accessory, the tires are necessary, the spare is not, the cup holder is not.
Right.
And if it's a, to me, a necessary use, it's not commercial anymore because we can't rent it out.
Mm-hmm, right.
Except to the, you know, the people who actually live there. At least that's where I'm coming from. I don't know how correct that is. I mean, probably there are some vehicles that can run around on three tires.
For sure. I mean, I think that the code is clear on the intent. The intent is that this is a commercial district, there should be commercial businesses on the ground level. I don't think it's the actual section, the intent is clear. I think elsewhere, I mean, the actual document itself, the intent is clear, but I don't know if it's absolutely crystal clear we want to have this long discussion on it within the chapter itself. So I think it has been open to too many interpretations.
May I introduce another issue? Someone asked me to ask about the, on a platted street, I think this was referencing some comments you made, John, and I don't, we don't have minutes because this is a special session was scheduled, that it was not located in a residential zone. They stated the platted street, the Montrose is in the, in R1. They would like clarification of that statement.
Off-street parking, first of all, it explains the size of the parking spaces, but then I can go on into that section. This is 230801. All access drives or driveways shall not be less than 10 feet wide. No access drive or driveway shall be located in any residential zone to provide access to uses other than those permitted in such zones. So my, you know, my explanation was it's not an access drive coming off of Morris because Montrose is a platted street. So it's not an access drive 1 to R1, it's a platted street that goes to this use.
Yeah, I mean, with it being a platted street though, it has to be treated as a cornered lot. Because it'd be at the intersection of Montrose and Stimson.
That's fine.
Well, right now, I think with Shade Tree Commission, because there has to be an eight-foot setback from the right-of-way on.
Project is going to Shade Tree tomorrow evening.
Oh, it's tomorrow, okay, so it hasn't happened.
And I did meet with Mr. Ingram yesterday morning and I believe it may be short a tree or two, but something he felt can be dealt with, so that was his initial comments.
Okay. Yeah, but, yeah, it wouldn't be an access drive then if it's a platted right-of-way.
So the section called forward, which is 230801, is that what the question is? Is that because it's a driveway with access in an R1 that it's a problem? Is that what you're?
It'd have to be a driveway, like not a public right-of-way.
Oh, I see. I was trying to wrap my head around that.
You know, it'd have to be a driveway on somebody's lot that connects it to, you know, someone's R1 or R2 or R3 lot.
That's just a right-of-way.
Yeah. All right, so a lot of interpretations.
Any comments?
Yeah, I guess that, John, that's a good point. Let's open it up to public comments before we proceed any further. We'd like to keep these brief to two minutes if that's all possible. Yes, you step up to the podium, any order is fine, but if you just raise your hand, I can point to someone if multiple.
Should the applicant go first?
What was that?
Should the applicant go first? I don't know if there are any.
Public comment, anyone go first?
Okay.
Yeah.
I've already made the case last week and I think clearly that this would be a violation of the B3 status. I would also like to make the case that if you move forward with this, in my opinion, you dissolve all distinctions between an R3 and a B3 district.
Please allow for yourself a.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm Ron Lewis. I am the executive director for the Athens County Historical Society. I do believe that if you accept this proposal, you are blurring the line between an R3 district and a B3 zone and perhaps making it almost impossible to make a distinction between those two. I think B3 is very clear that it is meant for a business. There's a reason why we call them residential codes and business codes. I think this is a business. If we refer to a rental property, the ground floor as a business, then we can say that any building that has rentals on the second floor and above, we can put in a parking garage underneath them and that is a perfectly acceptable thing to do. I wonder if we would accept Mr. Wasserman taking out the first floor of his pigskin building and using that as a parking garage and that would be acceptable to this city? I would hope not. I think the principal use of a building in a B3 district is business and a business for the public, not a business that is already part of an apartment complex. You have to provide parking. That is not technically a business. If we are going to make those kinds of distinctions, then every apartment complex is a business and we have to treat it, and every house that is rented out is a business and we can go on and on down that road and I think that would be a terrible mistake. I would like to suggest that there are so many issues that are wrong with this that it's in the best interest of everybody involved to turn this down. I also was looking in the code and if I understand your bulk, schedule of bulk controls clearly, I don't see how my understanding of the building is that you're going to provide 40 feet of minimum rear yard in the space that you've allotted. So that may have been taken care of, but I didn't hear that.
Thirty more seconds.
I'm sorry?
Thirty more seconds if you want. Thirty more seconds.
Okay, thank you. At any rate, I think that there's a very clear sense that a B3 is for business and a parking garage for tenants in a building is not a business. It is convenience for the tenants. Unless he wants to open it up for all of us to come and park there anytime we want to, that's not a business as defined in B3.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Go ahead.
John, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say the rear yard setback that Mr. Lewis is talking about, this property is in B3 and our code has a specific asterisk there. It says it's 10-foot rear yard setback except when abutting in R-zone. And then it says except when adjoining in R-zone, then not less than or required in that R-zone. That R-zone next to it is R1, so the rear yard setback is 30 feet, not 40.
And parking can be in a setback.
Yes.
And it meets the 30 feet.
And it does meet the 30 feet.
Yeah, I think it's 42. If you just state your name and street, live on.
My name is Tim Trassler of Millfield, Ohio. I'm a going on 50-year resident of Athens County. I used to live in the city of Athens. I prepared a couple of papers that I want to present to the board here. From the discussion I heard today, that it seemed like if you guys made a decision today, it would be certainly out of order because it seemed like interpretation is somewhat in question. My idea of a business is something that's open to the public. People can come and go, always say please and so on, so I didn't hear that in the discussion up here when you guys were debating interpretation of the board. Anyway, I'm a longtime resident of the county and I'm very concerned about the historical preservation and the like. I think that a loss of a historical structure like that building would be a great loss to our community and the sentiments of that I have included in these two documents. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have any documents? Okay, great. Thanks.
Available of the minutes of the session. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Go ahead. State your name and street, live on.
I wasn't sworn in because I hadn't intended to speak.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
I affirm. Thank you.
As I hear the chief city prosecutor, there is a strong legal argument for not approving this project. I had an opportunity, I wasn't able to, I didn't attend the first hearing on this, but I had an opportunity to review the file yesterday. In it is a letter from a gentleman who was seeking for a long time to find a location for his business in the city of Athens, his business not being parking. He contrasted that with the situation he had in Parkersburg when he wanted to put his business in Parkersburg. The gentleman's name gets away from me, his business gets away from me. I didn't bring my copy of the file with me, but it would seem to me that along with a strong legal argument, of course, turning this down, there's a strong policy argument accordingly. In the words of Nancy Reagan, just say no.
Share your thoughts. Other comments? Just go ahead. Again, just state your name and the street.
Beverly Flanagan, 132 North Lancaster Street. I just want to make two brief comments. Mr. Lewis referred to the pigskin, I believe, as possibly being turned into a parking lot. Somebody else at a meeting on Monday referred to Woolworths. Would this allow the ground floor of Woolworths to also be turned into a parking lot? Whether it can practically be done, so it's not the issue, in theory, could it be turned into a parking lot? Do we want to go down that road? And then secondly, Mr. Bittner said that in the past there have been different interpretations apparently of the code. Past misinterpretations should not be an excuse for present and future misinterpretations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to provide comments to this special session? Mr. Wasserman?
I thank the commission for its time. I may go beyond two minutes. My name is Rick Wasserman. I own Wasserman Group LLC and I'm trying to provide some high-quality housing for some students here in the community. I take issue with the law director's interpretation. There is nothing in the city code that prevents landlords from charging tenants for parking. Landlords charge tenants for parking all over the city. The city code says you must provide parking. It does not say you must provide that parking free. Furthermore, when the tenant does not take the parking space, according to conversations I've had with many in the city administration, including the code director, it is customary for people to release those parking spaces. So for instance, if I had a tenant who didn't need parking for the 2012-2013 school year, I would be eligible to take that parking space and rent it to somebody else, perhaps in another building, perhaps a building that doesn't have a requirement for parking because it was built before that requirement. And I'd be able to provide those people that parking and I would do so for a fee. And providing parking for a fee, on its face, is a business. Of this, there can be no question. Providing parking for a fee is a business. Now, speaking more broadly, the fact is that the city code has consistently been interpreted to approve developments of residences in business zones when those residences are on the second floor or above and parking is below them. I asked the commission, what was the business on Graham Drive when you approved the original Title 41 application for Graham Drive before they went back for a variance to get residences on the first floor? What was the business on the first floor? The business was air. There was nothing on the first floor. What is the business at 31 Fern Street on the first floor? 31 Fern Street sits in a B3. No, 31 Fern Street is not on a commercial drive, but the code makes no distinction between B3s on a commercial drive and B3s that are not on a commercial drive. 31 Fern Street is a development with a garage on the first floor and residences above. 5 Fern Street is a development with parking on the first floor and residences above. When Palmer Place was put in, we took a business in a B3 zone, the super-duper parking lot, and tore it down and now sits a parking lot in its place. There's nothing there but a parking lot in its place. It's clear that the city code has consistently been interpreted to allow this type of development and I submit to you that it is simply unfair and arbitrary and capricious to take an applicant in September of 2011 and approve a development of that sort and an applicant in January of 2012 and say, I'm sorry, there's a lot of public opposition to this, so we're going to change the way we enforce this rule and we're going to say you can't do that development. Now, Mr. Lewis's comments are well-taken. He says a few minutes ago that, you know, I don't want to go to that, but his comments in some ways reinforced what I was saying. I would speak to one other thing that has been mentioned over and over again. The fact that the business on the first floor is not a public accommodation, that is to say it's not a retail business that someone can walk into and walk out of, is not under the code a barrier to putting it in a B3 zone. There is no requirement under B3 that the business be a public accommodation. In fact, on Stimson Avenue itself, you have several offices that are offices of the Hocken Valley Bank. The public almost never enters those spaces. They are simply for the people who work in that space. And I would say to you that this is a similar situation. There will be a business on the first floor. Business will be parking. The business of the parking will be rented most of the time to people who live in the space, but some of the time to people who don't. And that is clearly, I believe, a permitted use in B3. I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wasserman. John, I take it if it got, I mean, is that in line with, John, is that in line with your interpretation of?
The only thing I would say to that is the Graham Avenue project, yes, it was there underneath, but it had the capability to be commercial as well as put additional parking underneath for that commercial space, you know, 50/50 or whatever it may be. So we don't know what that would have been or could have been.
According to the minutes of March 16, 2011, the developer, this is Integrated Services, or.
The Graham Drive.
The developer has indicated possible commercial expansion in the future for the proposed property. And I remember him coming and telling us that, that it's what.
The variance was granted by the BZA to include that.
This one didn't, that didn't require the variance.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that it was stated and presented to us for, to be a future commercial activity.
Pass, Ms. Elhasan. Ms. Elhasan, do you have any comments in response to Mr. Wasserman as far as his reading, his interpretation?
No.
Okay. It's up to us.
There are a couple of other letters that were submitted. I gave you two. Sorry, I forgot. I think there might be two or three up there.
John, did you not indicate Palmer Place was approved in a different manner?
I'm sorry?
Did you not indicate that there was something different about Palmer Place?
Well, Palmer Place is, Palmer Place is a long story. I did a lot of research on it. I don't know if you want all that information or not, but it is a parking lot in the B3 where it sits. The building itself is in an R3. It does have the parking underneath on Palmer Place, but it is sitting in an R3 area. But the parking lot itself, that's required parking for the rest of the structure, is out on the front where the store used to be and it is B3. So the lot's kind of split and zoned.
Want any information, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, if you have to go to the podium, we don't have microphones in the audience here, sorry.
Sorry, I asked only, I submitted a summary of my views to the law director and also asked that that become part of the record for the planning commission and I just asked, has that been incorporated into the record?
Yeah, that has been received and it will show up with the minutes, I believe is how we'll do that, unless, if it's submitted. Unless, if it's submitted here, we could read it or you could read it.
Well, I'm hopeful of avoiding the actual reading. But if that's what it takes to get into the record, then I'm fine with that.
If you're fine with it just being submitted as probably the minutes, it will appear there on the record.
So, it is part of the proceeding, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have that with me.
Now, with the parking lot, for instance, with the Palmer Place, being in the B3, if they have access, I mean, obviously, they can rent that, those additional spaces, and that would be considered a business?
Well, Mr. Wasserman asked that question. And I mean, I'm not sitting here saying that others, we know they did. We can't do anything about it. I mean, there's businesses all over town that are not using all their parking spaces and therefore they rent them out to other people. And I know there are apartment complexes in town that if they're not using all of their parking spaces, they rent them out as well. They're still required for the structure, but if they're not using them all, they rent them.
Right, but would they, with those extra spaces then that weren't necessary to fill a requirement, would that be considered a business then at that point?
He doesn't have any extra spaces not required to fill his requirement. That entire parking lot is required to fill the requirement of Palmer Place.
But is it, how long is it required to fill the requirement, I guess? Is it just to?
It's one-to-one.
Just for the permit, and then after the permit, you don't have to provide it to the residents?
Say that again?
I guess what happens if someone buys a car midway through their lease? Is the other person's lease voided that has that spot?
I don't know what the landlords work out in that agreement. All the code requires is that if there's 350 beds in that building, there are 350 parking spots on the site.
I guess I wonder why in city code do we have a requirement for parking for the use of the residences if they aren't required to be used by the residents? I mean, parking takes a lot of space. And I think the idea is that cars?
The assumption is that it is being used by the residents. It's not like a sanctioned activity. Palmer Place also remembers pre-Title 41 as well.
Yeah, it's pre, I think, here may have been the only person in a position. But I don't think it was reviewed.
I don't think it was reviewed.
Any other comments?
Question from Mr. Wasserman? Would you consider making the parking spaces under the building truly commercial by making it available for the general public and finding a required parking for the building somewhere else? Can you do that?
Well, I haven't considered that. It's not something that's come up before today. And I don't know what the availability of parking is in the surrounding area, so it'd be hard for me to answer that.
Any other comments? State your name and the street.
I'm Mary Ann Reeves, and I live on South Blackburn Road in Athens. I'm on the board of the Athens County Historical Society and Museum. And I just wanted to mention, there is a letter circulating from the board that I don't know if you've received yet. You may not have received it. But it's asking for looking into saving one of our historic sites, the Mule Bond for the Athens Brick Plant. So, I don't know that this letter hasn't reached you yet, but it is coming. So.
I don't know if we've received that. I mean, one of the planning commission really doesn't have a whole lot we can do when it comes to existing buildings on preservation or historical value. It's just not in our jurisdiction to rule on. Yeah, I don't have that. All right, we can see if there's some new letters here. I thought there were.
The one I gave you, there's a copy of the one.
They handwritten one?
The Neighborhood Association is stapled to the one that's handwritten on the front. There's two of them than what I handed you. And I believe Shar had a couple in there too. Jack Stoffer, I think it is.
This one from Jack Stoffer, Sunnyside Drive. "My interest in this matter is generally the defense of property rights and equal enforcement of our city code. I've watched the last meeting, have read all the legal, or local papers as well as looked over the city code. Please let my view be very clear and taken into context it is intended. I'm a law firm resident of Athens County and conducted my business in this town for decades. I'm a near-east side resident. Nobody in the town loves the town architecture and people more than me. In 1990, I remodeled my Court Street building to meet the Zarni Plan and was awarded the Historic District Renovation Award. Let me mention to you for your information that Mr. Wasserman recently purchased 1A, I believe that's, or A, it's either 1A or A Court Street building, and did a fine job rebuilding the facade as well as the entire building, which helps to raise the charm of Court Street. Here's my main point of my, I'm sorry, sure, love to. Here's the main point of my interest and concern. In July of 2007, I requested and received a variance for setbacks for my building at 31-33 Fern Street, at which I had been operating my plumbing contracting business as well as retail sales for a number of years. There was no mention about parking or objection to parking on the first floor of my proposed apartment building. 33, or 31-33 Fern Street is also a B3 zone. It may very well and probably is in the city's best interest to somehow tweak the code to help preserve our old town charm. However, today in our code, 230405A states an inconvenience business or general business. It would appear to be both legal and logical that renting parking spaces to residents or the general public, if not needed by tenants, and paying income taxes on said income would be considered business by our city. We are asked in our court system." There's also a email sent. Well, I guess this is a letter to the editor from Beverly Flanagan. Since you're in attendance here, would you like to read this or?
Just do it loudly.
I promise to speak as loudly as I can. "To the editor, several years ago, officers of Athens Neighborhood Associations began getting together to discuss issues of sheer concern to the community. At our most recent meeting, unanimous alarm was expressed over the potential raising of another building of historic significance, this time the old Mule Bond slash stable, aka Belovino, on Stimson Avenue. In view of all the sad and desecrating incidences of losing beautiful old buildings and overseeing inappropriate construction to degrade their residential neighborhoods, we are disappointed by the lack of any regulatory controls or even the implementation of historic overlay legislation to preserve the unique and historic character of our town. It is particularly distressing to note that a one-of-a-kind building might soon be torn down or be replaced by yet another student apartment building. When will we heed Joni Mitchell's warning not to pay paradise and put up a parking lot? As Ron Lewis advised in a recent opinion piece, once our distinctive buildings and neighborhoods are gone, they are gone forever. What little that remains to make Athens unique, i.e. our heritage and our future, will be no more. Plans for another large apartment building on busy Stimson Avenue raise a number of issues. First and foremost is the impact on the adjacent east side neighborhood, particularly the residents who live on Morris, Rosemont, and Ondis avenues. They would certainly be negatively affected by the construction of a three-story building literally sitting at eye level from their perspective. The importance of a buffer zone to protect our one neighborhoods from noise and commotion created in the non-residential area is critical to our quality of life. With an 18-bed apartment complex planned to abut right into the hill, the old trees and vegetation in this buffer zone would be destroyed. The Compliments of Plan specifically mentions the need for buffer zones in Athens. Further, the 18 cars belonging to those 18 restaurants or residents, not to mention the cars of their visitors, would seriously add to an already heavy traffic pattern on Stimson Avenue. The far too many people of the same age are already living within a very tiny geographic area. The matter of high density must be addressed. It's no secret that this area is one of the most problematic for city police, fire, and litter control." Finally, the Compliments of Plan speaks to the importance of commercial development in what is referred to as market area along the western portion of Stimson Avenue and notes that retail and service usage should be located on the first floors to maintain the integrity of this area's commercial and service area. Parking for residents of an apartment building is not in keeping with plan. The plan is also sympathetic to Athens' closed neighborhoods and specifies the need to support and stabilize them, not to impact them negatively. Another student apartment building on Stimson Avenue that will destroy a historic and unique structure does not fulfill any of the recommendations of the plan. Therefore, we urge the Planning Commission to deny the request to construct an apartment building on this site. We also strongly suggest the city council move toward proactive legislation to protect historic sites in the future. Sincerely, the Athens Joint Neighborhood Executives, which include Beverly Flanagan, West Side Community Association, Karen Dawn of Athens Near North Side Neighborhood Association, Ellen Boyd of Near East Side Neighborhood Association, Ed Baum of Near East Side Neighborhood Association, Larry Jagman of Far East Side Neighborhood Association, and Delia Rapp of South Side Community Association of Athens. I don't have any other letters. Up here's one. I do have another one.
Susan West.
This one's addressed to the lady.
Yeah, this one came through the city planner. It was from Susan West of Canterbury Drives. She writes, "What a shame and disappointment if we rule in favor of Mr. Rick Wasserman's Stimson Avenue apartment. Please go back and review Ron Lewis's comments on the proposal in Athens News Readers Forum, December 29, 2011. I am certain I'm speaking for many thoughtful citizens and so report a Mr. Lewis's point of view. Wrong can we be to pave over and obliterate our historic assets and charm? I do not believe people come to Athens and so how to view real, real nice apartment buildings." "Can't a developer such as Mr. Wasserman find an appropriate site that doesn't destroy our historical heritage? By the way, our historical heritage is what we bring to get money into the town and benefit everyone current and future." I'm sorry. And by, okay, I'll start at the beginning. "Can a developer such as Mr. Wasserman find an appropriate site that doesn't destroy our historical heritage? And by the way, our historical heritage is what will bring money into the town and benefit everyone current and future. Let's do the right thing as citizens and pay attention to our legacy and heirs." Also, Sandy Plunkett says it all with his farewell to Belovino cartoon dated January 5th, appeared in Athens News. Any other ones? Any other comments? Again, the planning commission cannot rule on historic preservation.
So, we have some laws in place.
Exactly. All right, any further discussion by planning commission members? We have no motion yet. But just wanted. Is there a motion of any nature? Any further questions? Everyone clear on what the principal permitted uses?
Residential housing.
Exactly.
Second floor and above.
All right, so the interpretation, it sounds like the planning commission is taking that. Residence is the principal permitted use and there's a requirement for parking for those residences. If parking of any nature is going to be on site of a business nature as a principal permitted use, it could not be also utilized as a requirement for the residences above or adjacent on that site. Does that, Harry, does that sound like your interpretation? Or the interpretation you shared?
Law directors' interpretation is not commercial.
Can I ask one more question, Mr. Wasserman?
Yeah.
Mr. Wasserman, are you open to the idea of finding additional parking off the property with the idea of renting the garage space to the public to make it a business?
I guess I'm open to anything, but I don't know where that parking would come from or who would be willing to lease that parking that doesn't already have it needed or in some other way committed to another apartment. So, I can't answer that.
Well, are the lots, in Palmer Place, at the corner, are all those lots deeded to Palmer Place then? I mean, couldn't you just?
They are owned by Palmer Place. I mean, that's for their beds. It's a one-to-one ratio. So, we would not be able to count any deeded or leased parking. First of all, it's a leased parking, it will require a variance. If it's deeded parking, then we would have to subtract that parking space from someone else. And not many property owners are willing to give out their property rights on giving away parking.
Because the only thing I was going to suggest was that, you know, it was subject to Mr. Wasserman finding out additional parking for, to fulfill his requirement. And then to rent the basement out or the garage out to the public. But that could be clouding things more than anything.
So, I.
I'm just throwing something out there.
Yeah, I just. I just don't see the commercial. I still struggle with that, the parking, the commercial use when it's required, so.
I'm trying to think if there's another example of required use that you can have as a commercial. So, we have requirement for off-street parking. Let me look at the code there real quick. Yeah, I don't know if it stipulates any requirement.
Would a distinction between this and, I guess some people are looking for, you know, the precedents that they feel that Graham Drive set with this project, would it be in that nature that he could have had business under that level, whereas with this project, there's no intent to have business?
Exactly. At Graham, the parking was separate. The parking lot wasn't created and parking there. And that, in order to comply, that was my understanding, is that space was going to be available for future commercial as the minutes reflect.
Again, this is required parking. If it was nine apartment beds, nine beds, then that parking would be for sale.
I mean, if you had enough, had nine outside the building.
Well, he has nine on the top. He has 18, he needs 18. So, he's got nine inside the building, nine on the top near Montrose.
It's going to have a nine in the, on the ground level that are a problem.
So, the conversation I'm hearing from both of you is that it is a problem. I mean, if we're grasping at straws to say, can you rent some spaces off-site or?
Yeah. That parking on, on the lower level for open to the public rental spaces.
It'd be okay.
And the commercial, truly commercial.
I guess, well, I don't want to throw this out there, but I'm going to. It is required that there's off-street parking per bedroom. Does it explicitly state then that that required parking has to be used by that bedroom occupant?
It's required per bedroom. So, I think that's saying that, yeah.
It's already been clear that you can lease it out to anyone else if that bedroom isn't using it, so.
That's really not a sanctioned activity, though.
It's illegal.
And we've also dealt with the opposite of where they're creating parking that exceeds the needs.
Yeah, that's been brought up time and time again. Yeah, I guess, no, let's go to off-street parking. Why not?
2310, I think it is. Was it 823?
I think it is. Yeah, 23. Yeah, I need the actual block controls. Or off-street parking. Off-street parking. Off-street parking requirements. One for each permitted occupant, a minimum of two per dwelling unit. So this is eighteen occupants, so eighteen spots. So that implies it has to be for the residence's use, but not exclusively for their use. So this is, to interpret it that way, the concept would be that the principal use is a parking spot that they throw in an apartment. Least parking spot in an apartment. Any comments? I'm sort of at a loss on this one on how to correctly interpret this per the code. Like I said and said before, I believe the code leaves a lot of interpretations. But I think Harry's on to something with the suggestion of approving it, that it's commercial, the first floor can't have parking in it, that there would have to be, approve it with the condition that parking is found for the first floor and elsewhere off-street parking.
Wouldn't it be, what you're saying is that they'll have to go get a variance for that if it's off-site, if it's leased or deed restricted, they don't need a variance.
At least they do.
At least they do.
At least they would need a variance. Deeded, they do not.
Deeded, they do not. So really what you're talking about is you're accepting as conditional of getting a variance for off-site parking. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah, on the condition that off-site parking is found.
Okay. The other way of thinking is says this does not fit the code and therefore gets rejected as a Title 41. I mean, and then how it works out after that is another matter.
Right.
I mean, if I was going to sit there and cut it one way...
Yeah, those are, I think, the two options.
And I'm not making either motion. I need the citizens to do that.
Let me ask the scenario, then. If that is the case, then parking would not be allowed underneath that, or that opens it up for him to lease or rent or parking? And what have we achieved?
Right. No, I agree. I agree, it doesn't...
That's the question. What if it was an office building above, would the parking be allowed to be underneath? It's required per the code based on the number of spaces.
But the problem, sorry, then the problem too would be that he wouldn't have enough space for parking and a commercial space in that law.
No.
No, I'm just saying if the entire building was a commercial building.
But the parking, most of the time, for commercial businesses, is for the employees slash customers, okay? So therefore, that by definition is a public use. I mean, sure, it's limited to only the customers and the employees, and it could be restricted. At least that's what I'm seeing. Again, I take this all with a grain of salt on, I'm just looking at the way I look at it. But again, there's a difference between saying, okay, this is for residents, and this is for a real, a realty, a retail store or an office. Who's leaving here?
Hey.
Okay.
And then the only other way, I mean, again, it's going back to approve it, you'd have to consider the residences as principal use, and the parking as a requirement. And that subject to general conditions means what follows in the subject to general conditions clause are principal permitted uses. But that's not, I don't think that's how you had interpreted it to begin with, correct, John? That would be a newer interpretation from the planning commission.
I went to legal counsel for interpretation.
I think Lisa's trying as much as she's willing to state. Yeah, but I mean, I think that we had only asked her the question, is parking a business? We did not ask is, in her interpretation, is residential principal permitted use as stated in the subject to general conditions clause of the B2 as it applies to the B3. All right, I'm going to put forth the motion then. I, let me get this red down. All right, motion is to approve the Stimson Gardens Apartments development under Title 41 with the interpretation that the residences is a principal permitted use and parking is a requirement. Any discussion about that motion?
How does that address the, the interpretation there is that parking becomes a business then at that point?
No, it's a requirement. It can't be a business. The interpretation is that the subject to general conditions implies that residences is a permitted use, principal permitted use. It's horribly written, but there's no question about that.
And that the parking is accessory to this, and therefore it's like the spare tire we don't need until we do need it.
Well, it can't be an accessory. In this condition, it's not an accessory because it's a requirement of a residential...
So it's part of the residential use, and therefore it is part of the residence which you can't have on the first floor.
Right, you can't have the residences on the first floor.
And this is a residential use, because its principal use is the parking as well.
We determine the principal use is residential.
Yeah. Well, obviously, yeah, parking is not considered a principal use, it's just a requirement of the residential principal use, just as parking might be a requirement of a business principal use.
I mean, I heard what Harry said about the possibility of going or deed restricting and finding, we're still going to be stuck with, excuse my language, the same structure and what will be there. So as opposed to having that, you know, empty space or whatever, because this is, but I don't know what kind of precedent this sets.
I think it sets a terrible precedent, I got to be honest. And I would also suggest, after this is approved or denied, we have a moratorium, moratorium in all development permits until this matter can be sorted out. I think it can be done very quickly. I mean, if we meet next week. If we explicitly want businesses on the first floor, then it needs to explicitly state dwellings are permitted above a business. And then we actually have to define what those businesses are. If we accept that parking areas or facilities are business, then that's just that. Let's not just say general business and leave it up to the whole world to interpret what a general business or services establishment or convenience business is.
No, you would just need more definition, more clarity as to what commercial capability is we're allowing or permitting or rejecting. Not so much the, to me, the upstairs, it's more about that first floor and about the commercial availability.
Right.
You say that, this will significantly change the landscape on Stimson Avenue.
Well, yeah, and that's a concern.
I don't see how you can separate the residential's and the required parking part of any residential rental at this point.
Right. I don't either.
You wasn't asking to.
No, I'm saying the parking is a requirement. Parking is not considered whatsoever in the motion to approve the residential principal permitted use. Parking is not considered a principal use. It's considered a requirement of the residential, which would be the principal permitted use.
It is not residential. It has nothing to do with the residential. It is not required. It is required.
It is required. Per occupant, one spot is required.
Yes.
One parking space.
That is not a business. It is residential. It is tied to a principal use.
Right.
It is part of the residential.
Yes.
It cannot be divorced from the residential.
Absolutely.
It's not allowed on the first floor.
So you're saying if it's, if parking's a requirement for residential, parking has to be above the first floor as well? Yeah. Which is possible if you were to make the whole...
Now we're going even higher on that, how this landscape's going to change on Stimson. Do we have the ability to waive, or does that indeed have to go to the BZA, the whole commercial?
Is it in violation of the code?
That's what I was just talking to Paul about. I think it's important to realize that Title 41 is not a denial process, it's a review process, and that what you probably ought to put as a motion forward is, is everything as submitted in by the different department heads interpreted correctly, or was there a made or submitted by my office, by me? It states that it should not have come here, and that should be the motion.
It should not have come?
If that's, is the motion, should the motion should be, was the application and the interpretations and the submittal that was submitted to the planning commission, was it deemed fulfilled and correct and everything correct? I mean, because it's not really a denial process through Title 41. So you can say, we've determined that the code office, code director, erred in determining that this was an acceptable use on the first floor and it should not have come here to begin with, or it's correct and move forward.
I see what you're saying. In other words, it was submitted improperly because there is a violation of the code. Because of the parking in the basement. Correct. Which, from my point of view, what I was expounding is part of the residence. Again, this is, we have a vague portion in our B3.
Absolutely.
Big gap in it.
And that's what I'm talking about in terms of, in the future, creating more clarity.
Not this session.
Not today.
No, no, not today. I think it'd be done very quickly, it just needs to have a curve. See, it does say under section Title 41, Procedure for Approval, 4104. E, I'm sorry, F is within 10 days after its decision, the commission shall issue a ridden decision and shall send a copy of such decision to the applicant. If the commission has denied the site plan, the commission shall set forth the decision and reasons for denial. We can deny it, just the reason being that it doesn't meet the city...
Read the first paragraph from Title 41, please.
The first one?
Yeah. Doesn't it say?
Did it there say we can't deny it?
I'm looking for the staff reviews.
Okay, staff, staff. Or that procedure for...
The very first two paragraphs, I believe.
I thought I had it with me, too.
I don't think I see what you want. I mean, if under standards for reviews, this planning commission shall review the site plans and supporting documents in terms of specific compliance with all minimum requirements. I'm not seeing which section.
Probably this one right here, I think. Is this what you want?
Thank you.
Do you want to take a look, John? I'm sorry. I find a great way out. All right, the intent of Title 41 Site Plan Review is, this section is intended to provide a means and process to review the proposed development of sites to minimize negative off-site impacts, address traffic and pedestrian circulation, and provide for public safety and efficient public services and utility. The intent is not to prevent construction of a project. This review does not replace other applicable sections of Athens City Code. The last statement is, the intent is not to prevent construction of a project. This review does not replace other applicable sections of Athens City Code. So I guess the idea is that the intent is not to prevent construction if it meets City Code, and the argument that is currently being made is that it does not meet City Code.
Right. I'll leave it open to you. So did you get a second to the motion?
No, no one's too eager on that motion.
Why don't we simplify the motion, Miss Long? Yeah, I just, this is just discussion here, it's not a motion, but I mean, just in terms of, you know, if we have vaguery in the code, then, you know, I'm concerned about setting a precedent that widens that confusion. And in that sense, then, you know, is it more applicable for us to stay as close to how we understand the code to be rather than trying to chart new ground?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Wasserman. Again, the podium, if you would.
I don't know how many of you read the summary that I submitted, but I would suggest to you that you would not be setting precedent, you would in fact be following precedent. In fact, to suddenly declare that building apartments on the second floor with parking underneath them does not meet City Code would be setting precedent. That would be charting a new course. Five Fern Street, 31 Fern Street, many other developments. That is the precedent. Thank you.
Well, I think the biggest one for us, you know, is that if you took the Graham Drive, and we have talked about why we don't think that was a precedent-setting move there, you know, I can't speak to previous planning commissions on that.
And since we've opened this forum, may I make one last comment? I hope it's my last. I would state again, Mr. Ron Lewis, Athens County Historical Society, if we've made mistakes in the past, we should not perpetuate them into the future.
All right, did you want to continue? Any other discussion on the motion to approve as residential, as a permitted use with parking as a requirement, but parking not considered residential, I guess? Let's maybe exclude that part. I don't think there's another, I don't think anyone's going to second the motion. All right. So is the motion that to not deny the project but to say that it's not, does not apply to Title 41 review because it does not meet City Code?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, so the motion is to send it, to not accept review of this any further.
Based on?
It not...
I think you need to say that.
Yeah, I guess it not meeting Title 23 of Athens City Code.
I'll move this along, second.
All right, so there is a second motion not to further review this Title 41 plan review because it does not meet Title 23 of Athens City Code.
As presented.
As presented.
As presented. And it could be presented differently, any progress? All right, and motion is seconded, any further discussion on that?
Harry, you look puzzled.
Oh, no, I quite understand, but...
Let me see if I'm getting this right. It does not meet City Code right now because the parking is not a commercial use in the first floor. Is that my, that's my interpretation what's being said here.
Well, I think there is many interpretations of why... Well, I think there is many interpretations of why it doesn't meet it. And I don't know if we have to explicitly state which part of city code we don't think. Is it the parking can't be a business? Is it the parking is a requirement of the residence? Is it, you know, parking has to be exclusive to the residence? I'm, I guess, I don't think we've had very good consensus on what it is that it doesn't meet the code, other than we don't think it meets the code's intent.
That's gotta be vague.
Exactly. So I, maybe we should explicitly state how it doesn't meet Athens City Code.
So, okay.
But.
Let me take a fast look at Title 23 Intent, okay? If you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Actually, Title 23 does not have an intent, but has a purpose. Title 23 is enacted for the purpose of promoting public health, safety, morals, general welfare of residents in the city of Athens, protect property rights of all individuals by sharing compatibility of uses and practices within the zones to facilitate the provisional, provision of public utilities, public services, and to lessen congestion of public streets, roads, highways, and to provide for the administration enforcement of the zoning code, Ohio Advice Code, common law rulings, and to prescribe penalties for Title 23. Let's see if we have something else here. Okay, that's the only thing I see that really does this. Interpretation of boundaries, no. This is a 50 intent. On the purpose.
You're saying the motion is that does not fit the purpose?
Well, you were trying, you were saying.
Yeah, I, I guess.
Is it, are we denying it because Title 23 because of the parking, the commercial, or residential on the first floor? Or just general intent? That's Title 41 Intent.
I want to think of anything.
Title 23. Which has a purpose, but not an intent. 230102. The other one would be 230101. It's just a title. 230103 is interpretation of standards. Which I don't think really applies.
I would almost say purpose. You know, we've had questions about the compatibility of uses and practices. We've, I don't know that this will lessen congestion on any public street or road.
No, no, mantras.
And then if we get to provide for the administration enforcement of the zoning code, we're back to this whole, how do we interpret the business?
No?
Yeah. So the, um.
So there's a motion?
There's a motion seconded, but we're gonna take that second away and see if we get this motion correct. The motion is to not further review the Title 41 Site Plan Review of Stimson Gardens Apartments solely because it does not meet the purpose of the Athens City Zoning Code, Title 23.
I said second.
Any further discussion?
Two par.
Sounds a little logical.
Well, we could say it does not meet the purpose of the permitted use under.
Somebody's asking a question.
Just a second. Sure, again, you have to go to the podium.
The podium.
State your name.
Your ruling is strange to me. Does not further, will not further review, does not further review, implies acceptance of the present plan. I thought the idea was does not accept. Mr. Paskey suggested that the motion say does not accept the review, the present review of the plan. In other words, as Mr. Paskey submitted it. There's quite a difference between does not further review and does not accept the present review. And language is important here.
Well. Mr. Wasserman?
Just one more thing. Seeing as, as I have as the, the applicant completed all of the requirements required of Title 41, I would ask only that before you vote, you read sections E and F of Title 41. And be sure that whatever decision you make conforms to what it says under those two subheadings. Thank you.
All right, F is to deny, E is to approve, more or less. Could read those sections again alone.
4104? Yeah. E is within 15 business days of the date, the reports in paragraph 4104D are filed, so the State Director Plan Commission shall review the application for site plan approval. Either approve the site plan based on determination of the proposed plan as in compliance with all minimum requirements, or shall approve the site plan subject to conditions, modifications, restrictions that ensure that the proposed plan is in compliance with all minimum requirements. F, within 10 days after the decision, the commission shall issue a written decision and shall send a copy of such decision to the applicant. If the commission has denied the site plan, the commission shall set forth in the decision the reasons for denial. And G, of course, is appeals for a final order adjudication or decision of the planning commission may be to the court of common pleas of Athens County pursuant to Ohio Advice Code 2505, 2506.
All right, so I think what Mr. Wasserman's suggesting with Site, Title 41, is that there should be a reason, a clear reason given for a denial. Or I guess if it's approved, the reason is you've met all the requirements. So if the clear reason for the denial would, and probably in this instance, be that parking is a requirement and therefore cannot qualify as a business.
Give a section of the code, it's probably what you gotta do. 23 or whatever it was on the B3 and.
Um, Austria's parking requirements is just per 2308, right? Yep.
I mean, I still feel it's the commercial use of the first floor. That is, that is the issue, not.
I think they're making the argument that parking is the commercial use. And I think we're, what we're suggesting is that parking's not the commercial use. Parking can only be a required use in this instance with that number of residential units. But, I mean, I get the other, right, the other side of that coin is that parking's not a, that a commercial use is required on, below the second story. In order to have residential, you have to have a commercial use below in the park. But you see what I'm saying? You have to make the argument that parking is not then that commercial, does not qualifies the commercial use.
So that's your motion?
Somebody's motion, maybe. All right, so I've not withdrawn the other motion either. And that is to approve the project with residential as the principal use with the requirement of parking. And the residential has to be on the second story per B2 definitions permitted uses. And there's also a motion.
Sorry, what was that?
Basically, it's a motion to approve the project.
Why don't you just say that?
No conditions or modifications?
No, exactly. No conditions, modifications, or anything. The other motion is to deny the site, Title 41's, deny, I guess you can't stop the construction, it says, but you can deny the project for not meeting Athens City Code. And there we're saying that under, well, let's reference the section.
4101F.
Exactly.
Is that what it is? Based on insufficient, or not insufficient?
So I'm beginning to wonder what my purpose is here. If we don't deny, construction can begin.
I guess we can't, we can either, there is no in-between approving or denying, is the interpretation. Where, I mean, I think it's pretty strong in the planning commission that they feel this should not have came before the planning commission. But now we're in a position where it is in front of the planning commission and we have to either approve or deny the project based on the timeline that is set forth by Title 41. That is my understanding.
Okay, the first motion did not get a second.
No, it didn't.
Okay.
So I will withdraw that motion.
Okay, the second motion, which was to.
Deny.
Because it did not meet the intent of the code, even though we should be very specific.
We have to get reasons for the denial.
Okay.
So I'll go to 23 at this section now, in question. Certified by permitted uses. That it is not, parking is not a principal permitted use. When it's a requirement for the number of units that's also on the site.
That's a modification of your motion.
What are you saying, John? Just out with it.
It is a permitted principal use. So.
When it's, so you could, I mean, I guess your interpretation is that parking can be a principal permitted use even if it's a requirement of the residences that's also on the same developed lot. And that would basically be the.
You can say it that way. I just don't, I just don't want you to say that it, don't say that it's because it's not a permitted principal use. That's all I'm saying. Don't say it just that way. Add more to it.
I don't think, yeah. I don't think we can deny the project if we don't, if we look at the parking as a principal permitted use. I don't think it'd be.
I have a distinction between private parking and public parking.
No, there's no, there's no distinction between private and public business is the, is the issue.
So you're saying every R1 has a business? Of course, all the rentals that are in the R1s are businesses and therefore not a form.
We're back to that.
I mean, if we take it the other, other direction, full throttle, every driveway is now a parking.
Every, exactly.
Every driveway and every rental is a business.
Any garage, any private garage, if you were to rent out part of that space, would be considered a business.
Well, I'm glad to see we just upped the amount of business in the city. Feel much better now.
Tax revenue would just start.
I was just wondering about that, actually.
Yeah, I mean, that's how you would have to, to make that reading. If that parking is a business, all parking's a business.
Well.
If it's leased.
If it's.
If it's not, I mean, if it's just there for use as like a, you know. This is a closet.
Okay, from my point of view, it's a requirement for the residences. It's a requirement for a bedroom. It's tied to the bedroom. It is not a public space in that sense. It's not public, commercial business.
Well, you would have any, well, I mean, guess what has to happen then is any, okay, say it's a, we're in Tunnel 23 again. Off-street parking. For example, a, a bank is required one parking space per 300 square feet of floor area. If a bank has their parking space inside a structure, is that parking space then considered a business? The, the area of the parking? Could that be, I mean, be interpreted in the same way?
That'd be, okay, are you saying that parking is restricted to employees only? To private citizens, to anybody who's actually using the bank for business?
I, I'm not arguing restriction or not, just as a business.
You know, this whole commercial definition, you know, public versus private, I could see some issues with it. For example, if you have a, a curves, you require a membership. I know it's open to the public, but you'd have to pay to have a membership to be, so it's not. I don't know about this, that aspect. Similar to the office space kind of argument.
Yeah.
I don't suppose there's any further guidance that would be able to be provided legally to help us in our struggles?
She's just taking copious notes.
Well, I think that I can't make the motion for you, but obviously it's to approve or deny. And then you just have to give your reasoning behind it.
Well, it's hard to give the reasoning if we're also being told that it's a principal use. And if the reason we're saying it's not a principal use is, I think there's a little bit, there's not consensus, which I think is something we strive for in the planning commission, is to have consensus on these decisions so that they are clear. That the opposition is clear in why they're opposing it and the proponents are clear in why they're accepting it. And I don't think there's clarity on either side. Yes, we're, we're gonna try to, you know, eventually wrap things up, but keep it brief and at the podium, please.
Tim Traster from Millfield, Ohio. Since we're into interpretations, I mean, this is the planning commission. And I don't attend many planning commission meetings, but what about planning? I mean, shouldn't we be thinking about planning for the future in our decision-making in the, on the planning commission? I know that you have a code to follow, but as far as your decision, should be in consideration of planning, which to me suggests future. There was one thing that Ron said was this, don't make a mistake because we made them in the past. You're all rather undecided and confused about what is actually in the code itself and how to interpret it. Imagine how citizens feel who are concerned about this project and a decision's made with such a lot of unknowns and uncertainty.
Well, I think that you're, you're seeing some confusion because number one, we're trying to give Mr. Wasserman the full weight of consideration.
And I certainly understand that.
Number one, in, in terms of precedent, you know, I think that this, a lot more than, say, the Graham Drive, is much more precedent-setting in the future. And I think this is where the, if you want to interpret this confusion, is on the planning commission, is, is more of trying to look down the road and really seeing, you know, what type of precedent this does set.
Good, well, I'm glad to hear that. Anyway, I was sitting out there wondering about such things. Thanks.
Thank you.
I know this in some ways is reminiscent of Philosophy 101 classes, but you know, it's just, you know, what is life and whatnot. But, you know, I think we are trying to, to take into consideration, you know, what precedent this particular project is going to set for the future. Because if you have architects who are proposing this type of project now, are they going to try to sell this type of project in the future to other businesses? And it's something that we need to consider right now. Unfortunately, it's not like the Supreme Court where you have six months to think about something.
We've got a 15-day timeline that's going on here. We've got a 15-day timeline that's going on here.
So your motion is seconded?
Well, geez, I don't, I don't think we're, we still have the clarity in that motion yet that anyone's gonna be willing to accept.
Have they removed that residential primary accessory, or are you still fighting with that?
Well, I was okay with leaving it until it was explained by the code enforcement and Director of Development that parking is a principal permitted use here. And so I don't want to, I guess, argue semantics with, with John to make this work. So I would, yeah, that would be just to approve the project, no other explanation whatsoever will be. But again, I pulled that because it didn't seem like there was, no one was willing to second that motion. The other motion, the new motion then is to deny the site plan review because it is, because there is no principal permitted use. As we see in the documents. So again, that's arguing, that'd be the same, John says there is a principal permitted use.
In the B3 zone?
That parking is a principal permitted use in the B3 zone, is the interpretation, and that's why we're reviewing this, because that's how he interpreted it. No more comments, I'm sorry.
Again, I look at the restrictive nature of the parking that you're talking about. It is, it is not part of the, it's part of the residence and not part of a separate standalone business.
Right, right. So the argument to approve it would be that the residence is the principal use?
On the first floor, part of the garage.
No, residence is principal permitted use if it's on the second story, and I think this has been the interpretation that, that John was taking, I don't want to speak for you, but that the residence is a principal permitted use so long as it appears on the second story. And the parking really is moot at that point.
Exactly, which is secondary to the first of having the commercial on that floor.
Right, right.
So that's what I'd like.
Because it's not, well, it never explicitly states the commercial has to be on the first floor, it explicitly states residential has to be on the second story.
I thought it was that the residential could only be...
It doesn't say story above anything, it just says second story.
Correct.
And that's, so I, I think the implication is what's implied without actually spelled out is that the commercial's on the first floor, but it never spells out, it never, it defines a convenience business or services establishment. I think we just keep ending back up at the beginning.
Yeah, I'd say, so we're saying 230405?
Under the B2 definition.
Yeah, okay.
Because it states, at the beginning again of our meeting today, the special session, John did say that B3 says, you know, under A230407A, principal permitted uses, any uses permitted and regulated in the B2 and B2D zones, as we've been going back to, except as here, right, and after, modified in the following general conditions. And that first general condition that he read is, "All businesses, services, or processing shall be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, except for the sale of automobile fuel, lubricants, and fluids at service stations, loading and unloading operations, parking, the outdoor display of storage of vehicles, materials, and equipment in the use specified in the paragraph."
Can we just cite that in 230407 and 230405?
Mm-hmm.
407.
That's what I would do.
Yeah, 230407, general condition one. Says that parking can occur on the site, and it can be indoors or outdoors, more or less, in that statement. But it never defines parking as the principal permitted use, it just says it's something that can occur on the site. "All businesses, services, or processes shall be conducted indoors," so parking can be outdoors. That's more or less what it stated.
Isn't anybody comfortable citing 230405?
And 230405, again, is the B2 definition of principal permitted uses.
You went back way too far.
Yeah, that was cited there. 230405, B2 Business District, A, principal permitted uses, any convenience business or general business or service establishment subject to the following general conditions. Residential uses are permitted only on the second story above, automotive services and service stations shall be at least 50 feet from any R-zone and shall have no openings adjoining R-zone. Other uses, any other retail business or service establishment or use which is determined by the BZA, A, to be of the same general character as the above permitted uses, but not including any use first permitted or not permitted in the B3 zone. So that means parking's not first permitted until the B3 zone.
What information was shared?
Exactly.
23.04.07A1, listed parking.
230407, you said? Yeah. But that's where it's, parking is implied as part of the business.
Just says parking. It says permitted uses.
I can imagine if we ever get to all of this.
... since you are allowing other comments from the floor. The principal permitted uses under B2 are very clear, as you read them numerous times, any convenience business, general business, or services establishment. It does not say parking is the principal permitted use, and we keep trying to skirt that.
Well, what Mr. Wasserman is bringing up is that under the B3, which his lot resides in, that it is, that under Section 1, "All businesses, services," or I'm sorry, Item 1, "All businesses, services, or processing shall be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, except for the sale of automobile fuel, lubricants and fluids at service stations, loading and unloading operations, parking." So basically, what it's saying is, if you're selling automobile fuel, if you're selling lubricants and fluids at a service station, if you're selling loading and unloading operations, which doesn't make any sense, if you're selling parking, you're, I think that they're meaning...
I just don't feel you can separate the requirements of 230405, 230407 refers you back to that, if you're, for the residence on...
Everything has a requirement, I mean, I think if you go throughout the code, everything has a requirement for parking. A business has a requirement for parking. That then doesn't make that parking a business. A dwelling has a requirement for parking, that does not make the parking a business. If a church has a requirement for parking, is that parking now a business?
So what section's already cited in this?
I still, yeah, have a, I have an issue with making parking a principal permitted use. I don't think it explicitly states that in code. The only place where parking is a permitted permissible use is in the R3 zone. The R3 explicitly allows parking areas, but the R3 is not applicable to the B3. R3, I guess, I want to know why it specifically states a parking area in the R3. R3, principal permitted uses, number four, parking area.
Mr. Chairman, will you do the come to a vote or take a recess for about 10 minutes?
Let's take a recess. All right, I'd like to call a Planning Commission meeting, or a special session back to order. There is a motion on the table that needs to be clarified. One, the motion is to deny the site Title 1 Plan Review for not meeting the requirements of 230405. Second. Any further discussion?
Did you read the general rule of conduct?
Uh, should I give you that back? I'm gonna have to go try to paraphrase what I just said.
Make this foreman move to ignore the Title 41 Plan Review because it does not meet Athens City Code requirements stated in 230405. Paul Horne moves as second.
So if you approve this motion or deny it?
All those in favor of denying. All right, there is a second, so we'll put it to a vote, as long as there's no further discussion on the wording. All right, all those in favor of denying the Title 41 Site Plan Review, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Aye. All right, so that's three.
To two.
To two, opposed to denying, so it's not denied, it's still a limbo, I guess.
Okay, I would move that we approve the Title 41. Wasserman Group's in some going appointments, case 1201.
I second that motion.
Okay. Do, before I go through all that, are there any modifications we wish to put in our conditions?
Shade tree approval.
Conditional to the shade tree and the other staff.
Yeah, I mean, I guess explicitly in shade tree approval besides the, now, is this, this is not up to date, or is it?
Good question, I don't know. Shade tree. Actually, the other thing would be all the conditions that were cited at the staff, the previous meeting, the January 4th meeting. Which is basically the sprinkling, or whatever else was there, I forget. So that's my motion, I second it, right?
Yeah, and I guess shade tree approval, there's specifically one item in shade tree I saw that this did not meet besides the trees perhaps, and I want to see if this, this part is still applicable. I don't mean to, I guess this isn't rolling, so we could talk about it afterwards, since we can't really say much about that, other than shade tree, commission approval. All right, so the motion is to approve the Title 41 Site Plan Review with the condition that it receives shade tree commission approval, as well as meets all of the requirements stipulated in the city staff review. I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those who approve the Title 41 Site Plan Review with those conditions, say aye. Aye. Any opposition?
Nay.
That's a three. Plus a three to two.
Three, you guys to four, okay.
All right, then, any other discussion? This meeting is now adjourned.
I think I ought to quickly tell everyone, last night at the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Board of Zoning Appeals decided to send 27 Meadow Lane back to the Planning Commission feeling that it should go through the PUD process, the distance, that was a PUD, they did not make a vote on it. I told them that they could probably attend next week for an open communication, because there's not a whole lot that's been shared with you members about this yet, and since we'll have a new member, so I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's what the decision was last night. So this is a townhouse property on fee, fee simple townhouse that wanted to put an addition on, that was a PUD in 1981, so I don't know if there's, I gotta do some research, might need legal on this, even as, what's the statute of limitations on a PUD, does it carry forever? It's been 30 years ago, 31 years ago. If someone wants to do an addition on to a 31-year-old PUD, does it go through the, back through the Planning Commission and City Council approval, or, you know, are we correct in going to the BZA for a variance request? They felt it should come back here, so that's how we're gonna do it for now, so...
And our next meeting is next week, the 18th.
And again, I want to thank Harry for his service and coming to this special session.
Thank you, Harry.
More than welcome to attend any meetings.
Yeah, if this is business, I would like to take this up for future recommendations, because this, you know, we need to get on this one really fast, and...
It tells us that we have problems with the code, and we should be looking at the code. That's part of the duties of the Planning Commission.
Right, but I see this as an immediate thing that we need to address.
Should I put this on the communications for the next meeting? All right, any other comments or questions? All right, again, thank you, Harry, for your service, and this meeting is now adjourned.